Trustee Newman called, and he's excuse me, is that Phil Inwell. And Attorney Winters will be at the board meeting, but not at the work session.
All right, we'd like to call the work session to order. The first item on this very busy work session is to review the funds for Recreation 14B Court and the golf course. Jovanna Neal is present and will do a presentation.
Hi, Jovanna Neal. And as Supervisor Stumbo had said, we're going to go over Recreation Fund, 14B District Court, and the Golf Course Fund today. First one up would be our Recreation Fund. That is Fund 230. And the first slide that I have for you, so we will be going over the detail, each line item, and the narratives. I just made a couple of slides for visuals, so you can kind of, you know, kind of get an overall idea. This first screen is just a budgeted fund balance. And when I say budgeted fund balance, there's no activity on '21 and '22. So these numbers are just based on our budget numbers, the ones we approved for '21 and the ones that we're requesting for '22. So in 2020, though, the activity one is the audited version. We did have a negative net revenue and expenditure at the year end. You can see the beginning fund balance was at $55,973, and the ending fund balance for 2020 was $46,255. And that follows over and is your beginning fund balance for '21. And with the net zero of the appropriations and the revenues, it stays the same as the ending fund balance. And that follows over to '22, and the same goes there. We have a net zero because the budget expenditures and revenues are exactly the same. So there is no net. And the bottom line is your percentage of fund balance by the appropriations. And we're at 8% ending in 2020. And you can see we go up to, or down to, I'm sorry, down to 5.8% in '21. And in '22, the projected percentage is 6.6. Those figures, I like those to be anywhere from 20% to 30%. So this one is a little bit further than, down than what I would like those. And the next page. So this is my snapshot page. This is a snapshot page taken at September 30th of each of the years for '18, '19, '20, and '21. On here, I have just the programs for the Rec Center. I don't have miscellaneous. I don't have the interest. So I did say net select revenues on here, just so you could see, you know, what the revenues from the programs were from one year to the next. And then on the far right side, those percentages are the percentage changes from one year to the next. Right? And so you can see how they go up and down. I did want to point out the Ford Lake gate fees. That is the last six numbers of 637004. This one is the responsibility of Robin Castle Heine. And you can see the amounts on there from '18 at $44,515, '19 it was $47,186. We did not charge any gate fees for COVID in 2020. And for '21, at September, we were at $61,000, yes, $61,268. So she did a great job there. And I do want to just point out that you do have expenditures related to this, and the expenditures are for the gate attendance. That amount for the year was $30,090, making the net revenue and expenditure just for the gate fees and the attendance a positive $30,360. So I just wanted to point that out. And that is with Loon Feather actually closed. So that was very good. Also, the park shelter rental fees, you can see those have gone up. And I just think people were just pretty bored and wanted to get out. So any questions on this page? Just kind of like I said, it's a snapshot of September.
Madam Chair. I just wanted to also, you know, just thank you to Angie and to John Heine and Mike Hoffmeister and everyone that works in Recreation. But, you know, we've especially done a really great job with the Recreation and Youth Sports. So a special thanks to John for, like, holding those two hats upstairs. Like, John will be Deputy Supervisor and, like, organizing soccer t-shirts at the same time. So thank you. And I think our numbers are very reflective of all the hard work that's gone into our Rec program. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Clerk Darryl Rowe. I did want to, you know, I did miss the Youth Sports. That is also a line item that did go up. Sorry about that, John.
Thank you.
Sorry. So that line did go up, as you can see. That's the second one down. So a lot of good lines here. We have a couple that were down. Surprisingly, the dance, which has always been historically one of our bigger draws, but that one was down for, I don't know if it's just because of the environment being inside. It probably has a lot to do with it, but, you know, we'll just blame that on COVID.
Well, the dance.
Pardon me?
The dance recitals happen in December, right? Or January?
But we're still looking at snapshot.
Of September.
September, September, September. So it's not a, that, I took that into consideration because sometimes we get those funds, right, coming in in October. That's why we look at just one, ending of one month, so we can tell those. All right. Any other questions on that? I thought we did pretty good. Oh, wait, you know what? So sorry. I did want to look at the transfer in from BSR2. That's the funds that, again, get transferred over so that we can balance our Recreation. You can see that they're in the revenue line item, so they're part of the total selected revenue. And the last two lines, I took the BSR2 funds out. So if we had no BSR2 funds, what would our revenues look like? So that last line is what our revenues would look like, like if we had no BSR2 funds coming into that account. I did want to point that out. All right.
Joe, I do think, Jovanna, sorry. I do think that this shows that Recreation is very important to the community, and our parks are very important.
I can't hear you.
Hello?
Yes.
And our parks are very important, you know, it's really a big part of who we are at the township. So I think the use of the parks and the Youth Sports is something that we're really trying to get back. And they're trying new creative things, too, for next year. So I think, I think we did well. John did wear two hats. Thank you so much for being the Youth Sports Director and Deputy Supervisor, because you did do both. But it, the team effort helped make it. We have a new Senior Coordinator with us, and she's great, too, and just kind of getting into the rhythm of things. So I think Rec is doing well. Angie, thank you.
I think so as well. It was, I have to say, I'm proud of the team, everybody.
You have to, you have to come up.
I'm sorry.
Angie Verges, Recreation Services Manager. I would like to say kudos to the team as well, because everybody was being flexible and jumped in where needed and got creative and did what needed to be done. So, yeah, proud of that.
And the facility has been improved. It's been painted. We have murals over there. We continue to keep, you know, making Recreation a center of who we are. And it has been for many, many years.
And we've gotten a lot of good compliments from the community and the seniors when they come in of the look of the facility as well.
Good.
So it's exciting.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the last slide I have for you is a historical slide. And it shows the BSR2 transfers in. Those are the blue, the darker blue column. It's from '13 to the budgeted '22. And then the turquoise column is just other revenue. So those are your programs. And the green is your expenditures. I just wanted to kind of give you an overall view of how things have gone historically. So I just, more visual. All right. And then we're going to go over the detail for the Fund, Recreation Fund 230. And we do have Angela Verges here, that she's going to be answering some of your questions for you. I will help out. This is in your binder. If you have your binder with you, it's on page 90. If you have your minutes, they're in the minute packets at page four. So we're going to go over those. And I do want to say, I did participate in a trunk or treat over the weekend. It was the funnest time I've ever had. I believe there was, and Debbie Swanson was there as well, Trustee Debbie Swanson. And Angela was a big part of it, a lot of work. So it was really nice. And Angela, we have, like, 300 kids? 300 kids? And it just, it was very fun. So I just wanted to say that. But, so we'll go over the budget. If there's any questions? Angela, you want to come up, too? We'll both try to answer, we'll both try to answer questions for you.
It's hard.
It's hard. It's hard to bring up on the screen. We've got a new work here. So if you've got your, you know, if you're able to pull up your packets, like I said, in the packet, it's page four. If you have your binders or your hard copies, it's on page 90.
Angie, Recreation Dance, why is it down?
Dance, there were less classes last days offered this time. Based on demand, we offered it, but we didn't get the interest. Seemed to be more interest in outside programs. So it was down a little bit. One thing we did bring in was a new style of dance, the Urban Ballroom. It's a different company that lost their place during COVID, so we collaborated with them. And all three of the classes they've offered have had 25-plus people in it. So we're looking to get that back up in the dance line item.
Okay. When do they sign up for the, are we still doing a production and?
In April. The production, the recital is usually in April. So right now, they're finishing up. The winter session ends in December, and then they'll pay again in January and do another 12 weeks of dance. And they can also start paying for it in December. So we may see some of that revenue in December as well.
Do you think $48,000 is a good number for that, then, based on this year?
I think it's going to, it may be high based on this year. What do you see, Joe?
Yeah, we're at 11.
The way we're looking right now, it may be a little bit high.
But we can adjust by the time we do the, once we get October numbers in, and then we'll know a little bit more.
Yes.
So it's like all the other funds, like Court and everything else, you really, the closer we get to the end of the year, the more, the better numbers we get. But that looks like it might be, still be a little high.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And you have a new item, Youth Enrichment Class?
There were several programs where we added new line items. We wanted to separate them out, so the Youth Enrichment is separate, whereas before, we had Sports and Enrichment together. It gives us a more true picture of our expenditures and revenue. So we broke those out a little bit.
That's good for Rec.
Yes.
Can I just have one?
Yes.
Angie, the field rental fees, which I'm happy about, don't get me wrong, but it doesn't look like we've charged the last two or three years, or just no activity? Because it's all blank, unless it's somewhere else.
We just, that's a new line item, because field and building rentals were together.
They were?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, we just added that line item, so you, that's not a true reflection.
Okay. As a part of that, did you raise the fees at all?
We were talking about increasing fees. John could speak to that a little bit, because he was looking at the fees with us. He can tell you what.
I know before COVID, we started to do a comparison between what we've charged and what other municipalities like Canton, Pittsfield, and Ann Arbor charged. We did raise the baseball field rental fees, but we've not looked at soccer field rental fees. And I know we've had discussions on shelter rental fees as well. So I think going into next year, we had a meeting about two weeks ago, that we were going to sit down and kind of solidify, before this next brochure goes out, what those new fees might look like.
Good.
That was John Heins?
Oh, John Heins, yes, Deputy Supervisor.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to quickly say for everyone who's, like, in the audience, that the Clerk's office is being kindly asked and required to use a different program today. So that's why we're just having a little bit of technical difficulties. So thank you for your understanding.
Any other questions for Rec? Let's move on.
Thank you, Angela. Okay, so I'd like to move on to our 14B District Court. Again, my presentation has a couple of slides, and then you'll be able to speak with Mark Nelson, Magistrate Mark Nelson, and Judge E. Rain, Washington. Can't get him up? Okay. Are you still, that's all right. It's all right. The next time, I'll make sure that I put them back to back on my presentation, so the new, the new technology. Okay, so the first screen, again, it's a budgeted fund balance. You know, where did we stand at year end in 2020? The net revenue and expenditures was a negative. It's a negative $136,535. The beginning fund balance was $146,881. The ending fund balance, $10,346, making the percentage of fund balance to the appropriations 0.6%. So it's, it's down quite a bit. You'll see that in the historical. And there's a lot of things going on with this account. So we'll, we'll talk about that in the slides going forward. Go to the next one. Okay, this is a snapshot. Snapshot at September 30th for the years '18, '19, '20, '21 budget. And I think that's, that's all I have, is the 20, that's not budget, that's '21 actual revenues that we have. All right. You can see at the bottom how we're running, just, actually, just look right down to the bottom line. The net revenue is less the general fund transfers. In '18, we didn't, in '18 and '19, we did not need any help from the general fund in this 14B Court Fund. And then in '20 and '21, we have needed some funds to help balance out. You can see the revenues went from $1,251,164 in '18 to '21 at $707,332.
Joe, this is as of 8/31 and not 9/31?
This is 9/30. All revenues at 9/30. This is a snapshot of 9/30 for each one of those years. So you've got a comparison of each year, and it's cumulative. So it's cumulative to 9/30 for each one of the years. So that kind of gives you an idea of where, where we're at. And you can see the, the amounts go down drastically, and they're down more in '21 than they were in 2020. Now, the Court is still doing cases by Zoom. And they, you do, are open for people to come in and pay?
Yes.
So that makes a difference still. They're on a different type of COVID opening?
Yeah, but that doesn't really speak to revenue, though. I mean, we're, Mark Nelson, Magistrate Court Administrator, 14B District Court, that doesn't really speak to revenue. I mean, we're, we're able to handle our caseload and handle our, and move our dockets forward. Not as normal, obviously, but as best we can in the circumstances. We're under, we're under directive from the Supreme Court and Health Department, everybody else, as to how we're supposed to be operating. We have freed up more people coming into the counter to make payments in person. I don't think that makes a huge difference as to accessibility. People were making payments prior to that by Dropbox, Internet, or mail. They're just choosing to, in lieu of doing those things, coming to make them in person, we're not getting into influx of payments because of that. But our day-to-day operations, courtroom operations are moving forward as they would have any other time. This is really about our caseloads, not our ability to move through, move through the cases that we have.
Thank you. All right, the next slide. Shows the amounts that either, so the revenues are going to be in the greenish color, and the expenditures are in the orange color. The pink color are funds that actually the Court was doing really well. You can see the revenues are crazy, like in '17, it's $1,970,189. They did give back to the general fund $400,000 that year. You can see the year before that, they was, they gave back to the general fund $492,524. So those pink ones are when the Court was actually doing really well, and they gave funds back to the general fund. All, all funds belong to the general fund, so it's, it's okay for them to move that funds back to the general fund. And then in the green for '20, '21, and '22, those are the funds that we need to transfer from general fund to the Court to help them out and help them balance. I do want to say the, the total received from, received from the general fund over in the green, total, and those are budgeted amounts, so we may not need all of that, but I do believe we will end up using all the $500,000, and we might have to have some more by the end of the year. But I will bring that back in, later in November. But the money that we have given to the Court is $1,692.51, so $1,692,051. And I'm just, just, I just summed those amounts that are up there for you. And the amount transferred to the general fund totaled $1,042,494. Now, I do want to point out that the general fund still pays for a couple of the expenditures for the Court. They pay for the, whoops, which I don't have down here. Oh, yes, I do. Sorry. So the general fund does pay some expenditures for the Court. They do pay for the attorney criminal fee, the attorney fees for criminal cases. Also, the cost of prosecution and the cost for prosecution of domestic violence. So that totals, and I don't have those up here, because those are in the general fund expenditures, but each year, so for 2019, that amount was $354,991. In 2020, it was $446,707. And in '21, it's scheduled to be $417,755. So my point being is that, yes, they did give funds to us in past years when they were doing really well, but it's because it's offsetting the fees that we still have to pay for them. So anybody have any questions on that? Is that?
I'd, can I address that last point real quick? So what she's talking about is.
I just read nothing.
Yeah, thank you. What she's talking about there is prosecution and public defense. Those aren't court expenses. Those are, that's the cost to prosecute defendants and the, and the cost to, for public.
Yeah, Mark, what she's talking about is that used to be in the Court budget before you. So she's historically, and then we moved it out of the Court budget into the general fund.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that distinction. I mean, it's not, it's not a court cost necessarily.
It was a court cost.
Okay.
We had it in that budget. We did. We, she's just trying to explain that we moved it over.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And so I, evident by looking at it, and it's the same issues that we've had with the, in our weekly police meeting, because of our weekly or daily requests from the residents is to have speed enforcement. And that is $421,000 or is, $423,000 is budgeted, and you're at $275 right now. So, I mean, they, like.
Well, then, to that point, I'm sorry, may I speak to that point?
What?
May I speak to that point?
Sure.
Okay. I'm glad this graph is up here, because you see the 2017 number that Joe pointed out. And just to piggyback on what the supervisor was saying, at that point, they were averaging 22 traffic citations a day, were coming into the Court. And at this point, we're down to eight a day. So that 2017 number illustrates that difference. And you come down, you see that number drop, drop, drop. I mean, it's, it's dropped every year from 2017 to now, to 22 to the eight on average per day of traffic citations being filed with the Court.
And on the cost, do we have, let me see, what's the terminology? On board, on, onboarding, is that the technology? On base, I'm sorry. Do we have that through the, because we pay $40,000 to Washington County IT. Does it include that on-basing or whatever that?
Yeah, we use, we utilize on-base. The county prosecutor uses that, utilizes that to file their cases with us.
Right, we pay that, right, Mark?
Well, it's part of our support. There's not a, there's not a, I don't believe there's a software cost for that. That's just built into our support from County IT.
And then, and there's a $49,000 fee for lean or something?
There's, we, we pay for lean through Oakland County.
Yeah.
And we also are going to start paying for JIS starting the next fiscal year.
And that increase, that, that's an increase that we talked about.
Yeah, that's our, that's our case management system that we've had in place since 2012. There's an agreement was entered into between the township and the state, probably a decade before 2012, to develop a new case management system. The state didn't perform on their end of that agreement. Their quote-unquote penalty for that was to provide us with free JIS for that period of time, and that, that period is now expired, so we'll be paying for that. It's 30-some thousand a year for that.
Those increases are also in operation of the Court.
Correct, yeah.
That we pay for, and it helps where all the Courts are talking to each other, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that system talks directly to Secretary of State, talks directly to lean.
And our judge hears cases in other Courts? Does she rotate?
We're cross-assigned on cases, and we do, we do, do take care of preliminary exams for other Courts and also take on cases on our Drug Court docket from other Courts as well.
Yeah, so there's a lot of collaboration with the County.
Correct.
That some of the costs are in.
So now we'll move on to the detailed line-by-line and narrative portion. Dan, I'm so sorry.
I just had a, I'm sorry, Mark.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, line 602, 136, the Court cost, that is for citations written in criminal cases or cases brought forth to explain the decrease from 423 down to roughly 275.
That's part of it. So there's, there's bites taken out of every fine and every cost to go to various pies or buckets. So that's, that's part of it, yeah.
And I'm trying to read the narrative as we go. I apologize if I didn't get it to you sooner. So you make mention, or there's mention in the narrative about collecting fines or fees that were assessed, and the improvement that's been made in there and will continue. Can you just elaborate on what those improvements are to make sure we're collecting fines that have already been?
Sure. So we had, a number of years ago, had instituted different mechanisms to follow up on collections. We allow for and track payment plans, for example. We, you know, have other mechanisms for ensuring that people continue to make payments, although some of that is being taken away from our toolkit, because the States reduce the number of citations. For example, you can get a suspended license. So we are going to probably have some fall off on our ability to collect, because there's no teeth behind it.
Okay.
And, you know, we can't jail people for not paying their fines and things of that nature. So I know there's a long history with township civil infractions, for example, ordinance matters, where they go ignored and unpaid, and we don't really have a lot of teeth behind that.
And that's, and that's where I was going to follow up. When I slide down to line 605, 001, it budgeted last year at a half a million, and we've collected as of, at least on this, it says 8/31, just under 150. And that's the 14B ordinance fines and costs. Would that be ordinance that we're writing on our end?
Primarily, yeah.
And you've seen a decrease there as well?
Yeah, and my understanding is the ordinance department had fewer ordinance officers and things of that nature.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, I just want to make sure I understood them well, the difference between the two.
Judge Washington wanted to touch on something, too.
Judge Washington? I'm short, so I'm going to have to move this. Good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see everybody on the.
It's good to see everybody on the board. Rain Washington, 14B District Court Judge. I just wanted to address a little bit of what you asked about Trustee Eldridge with respect to the collection process. So that you know, we've gone back and looked at all of our files from the probation department to see people that have outstanding fines and fees that are uncollected. And we are going through those in a methodical way to set them up to come into court to explain why they haven't been paying, whether they have the ability to pay or don't have the ability to pay. And I'm now scheduling reviews on my docket on a regular basis, it's about every 90 days, to see whether or not they're making those payments so that we can try to collect on pass fines and fees. Despite that, as the magistrate had indicated, due to ordinances and fines being down, it has impacted our budget greatly. But from our end, we're doing the best we can with respect to trying to collect on pass fines that people can pay, that they have the ability to pay. So I just wanted to address that piece for you.
Are you having a good day, Judge Washington?
I am having a pretty good day.
There was, I did see the article as well as...
Mmm, you're talking about the video, right? I see. You know, it's funny, everybody finds that entertaining.
You went viral, yes, you are.
Yes, my husband explained to me that he read an article from India. So that's how worldwide it is. Interesting.
So tell them, just real quick, tell them what happened. It was a funny...
No, we're not talking about... I won't talk about anybody independently about that video, which I had no anticipation, which explains to you how our technology works, and it's important that it works. So we are doing hearings every day from nine to five, for the most part, I am. And we're collecting what we can. So that's what we're doing. And I don't, I don't want to talk about the video.
I'll talk about the video. There was, only because I saw it, but I don't know it as well as you do. But there was a gentleman who was doing a Zoom before Judge Washington, and it was in regards to licenses. And he was driving a car. And Judge Washington.
So this gentleman appeared before me on a driving while license suspended. Also, he did not have proper insurance, which also suspends your license. Prior to the case being called, he had already interrupted the docket by actually saying, "Has my case been called yet?" So when the case was called, his particular case, I admonished him because he was driving at the time. And I asked him to pull his car over and to get out. And he then proceeded to say to me, "If I'm having a bad day, I should just say that." And somehow or another...
That's what, that is what went viral.
And that's all I can say about what happened because I'm not commenting on anything else.
No, no, no. I saw it. I finally saw that video, and it was hilarious. It was on the news and everything, so...
Yes, it was on the news. And if anyone has heard of Chalamet the God, he also put him on Donkey of the Day, so...
And unfortunately, these occurrences are not unusual. I've had the same thing happen at least 10 times in my hearings. I just didn't make it onto YouTube. Or onto, I didn't go viral, TikTok, that's it, yeah. I don't even know what it is, but...
Your motorcycle might go viral. I don't know, this is so much COVID-related and things that are out of our control. And we recognize that. And Judge Washington, I've heard nothing but positive comments and from you as our new judge, and we're proud to have you aboard. This is a bumpy road, and it'll level out. We are at full staff, so that's good because we haven't been at full staff for a long time as well.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate that. That was a rocky road without having full staff. So the work is still there despite the case loads being down. It actually is, in a lot of respects, is a heavier lift to get the dockets done when we're doing them online because the clerks at the front of the counters are much more involved. They're reaching out to people, sending them emails, getting them the information to get onto Zoom. And then the entire time that the hearings are happening, people are calling them, "Why hasn't my case been called? I need the Zoom link. I need this." So I mean, there's a lot more interaction in need, whereas traditionally, the people would come in, check in at the counter, and be sent in the courtroom to sit and wait. You know, now they're, have almost free interaction with the clerks, and they're on the phones with them, they're emailing them. So we have a lot more work to pull these dockets off on the criminal side. On the civil side, we've been mandated by the Supreme Court. Our landlord-tenant cases have gone from a maximum of two hearings. Now they're out in, what, 10, 11, 12, 13 hearings on landlord-tenant dockets while people are attempting to get the Sarah funding, the financial assistance to pay their rent. So everybody's invested and interested in making sure that happens, of course, so people stay housed and don't lose their homes, and the landlords are made whole by getting the rent. The issue on our end is now we're touching these files way more times than we ever have. The notices that go out are much more involved. We're sending out a lot more documentation to folks. So while our caseload's down, I do want to emphasize that our workload is not down by any stretch of the imagination.
Yeah, and people who have to get on Zoom, there's a lot of anxiety with that because I actually help people, and I know we put something in the court so they can log on there. We do have Wi-Fi. I mean, we're trying everything, but it's a people's court, not a computer court, you know?
Yeah.
But that's where we're at now. So we understand. Hopefully, it'll get better.
It has to, right?
Yes. All right.
So do, yeah, does anyone have any questions on the detailed expenditures? We did go over a couple of those. Supervisor Stumbo went over, and Magistrate Nelson went over a couple of the ones that increased, the one being the software package that they have to pay now.
Right.
Is there any other questions? All right.
Chair, I want your time.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we're going to go to golf, golf course. We do have Kirk Sherwood here. Oh, there he is, there. So... I'll go over a couple of my slides. Again, visual, little visual slides. And this golf course is a little different because it's considered an enterprise fund or a business fund. So on this one, it's a little bit different. It's not fund balance, it's net position, an unrestricted net position. So you can see, I've got this up here for you so you can see kind of where the fund is at with a money that is not restricted, which we would refer to as a fund balance. So for 2020, the year ended with a net revenue positive of 4,361. The net position, or the beginning net position, which is your unrestricted net position and basically the investment in capital. So that has a lot of the capital in there. And you can see in red where I've removed the investment in capital. So that's your capital. And that shows you what you have unrestricted. And that goes right across, so you can see what that's at. The percentage of unrestricted or fund balance in that account is at 28% in 2020 and projected in '22 to be 25%. So actually, it's doing very, very well as far as what we have in our fund balance or the unrestricted net position. Does anyone have any questions on that slide?
It was a good year.
It was, yes. Yes. So the next slide will show you what, again, the snapshot. So I did a snapshot on each one of these. So you can see the snapshot for 9/30, September 30th, of each of the years from '18 to '21, and what we have there. You can see in '18, '19, and '20, we did need some fund balance help. We did need some help from BSR2 to make sure that we balanced. And you can see, I took those out. On the last two lines, I took the BSR2 transfer out so you can see exactly what the revenue would have been without the help from BSR2 fund. You can see in '21, I think we're the only game in town because it's really, is very, doing very well here. It's up, they're doing a really good job. So I just kind of wanted to show that. And does anyone have any questions on the revenues?
I just have, just looking at it, because I do think, well, we budgeted $90,000 for food and beverage for '21. That's because we thought we were going to have alcohol. So that's part of that.
Yes, we did budget for revenue, a higher revenue, but we also budgeted for the expenditure to purchase that too, which we didn't.
Right.
So that's kind of an offset there.
And the only thing, and I like Kirk, and I know because of this year, but leagues used to really help, which, you know, bring in revenue. And I think that's an area where we could do a little bit better for next year and focus on it. And I know you do, but this year, I mean, it's on, and you've done a great... I mean, the course is in excellent condition, and Kirk has run it very well. And we've done a good job, and people like our course, I think. And, you know, I think it's really doing a good job. I think we need to invest a little more. We've talked about it over the last couple of years, about the irrigation system. I think it's the original, is that right? It's the original irrigation system, which was in '70 or so. It's very old, and they spend a lot of time repairing it. And they can't get help. So, but I did, was going to submit that to Senator Irwin for dollars at the state level because he asked me for projects last year, and I gave him that big one. But we have to, and I know that is one thing we absolutely have to do, get the better equipment that's more efficient and then to invest in the actual water system. And it's about a million dollars. But it's original, you know? I think they've replaced it or repaired it so many times. You know, you get to a point where you gotta... So I think this year, maybe at the next meeting, do authorization to get it, some sort of engineer, professional, do a request for proposal or something for professional engineers to look at irrigation system here. Because they spent a lot of time on that, and it's critical to a golf course to have a good irrigation system. I just wanted to plant that seed. And we've talked about it before, but it's becoming more and more of a reality. But great job on this, this year. Recreation was up, you know? That's a good thing that came out of COVID, one of them.
Okay, the next slide, again, is just the historical, oops, sorry. Trustee Swanson?
That's a good point. And I'm thinking probably there's a lot of innovation that's happened in that time period, maybe more sustainable uses and that as far as irrigation goes. So that's a good thing to know. I'm wondering if, maybe you're going to get to this, are we fully staffed now? So I know when we made adjustments to salaries, there was a position that was unfilled. So I'm wondering if that staffing is...
We budgeted for the two positions. In the front, and then in the back, there's two. Oh, you only budgeted for one. This year, we budgeted for two positions.
Yeah, we did budget for an assistant.
That's what I thought.
We did budget for the assistant that's in 706.
Yeah, so we budgeted to have both positions filled.
It's not filled.
Is that your question, Deb?
Is it filled, or are we still...
It is not.
No, it's not. We were using a seasonal, right?
Yeah, for the most part.
Pardon me?
I said, yeah, that's what we ended up doing, yes.
Yeah. And you have it posted now?
Correct, it just closed on the 29th. So I haven't found out exactly how many applicants we had. Last I knew, it was about three. So...
Okay, the...
It's posted, and we have three applicants, yeah.
Right, so the last slide, again, is a historical look at the revenue. I did want to point out that the '21, which is the second set of numbers on the left, the '21 budget, you can see that we are asking for 184,650 from the BSR2 fund in order to balance this fund. That was our budget. And we projected the revenue at 627,050. Then I put in green on the bottom, at September, we're already at 655,792. I do not believe we're going to have to use any BSR2 money in '21. So if it stays like it is now, when I finish up the books, I don't think I'll have to transfer any money over. So that's a very good, very good sign.
You're currently at 711. So it was a good month in October as well.
Okay, great. I haven't seen the October numbers yet, so...
And it snowed today, right? I hate to even say that word, but it did. How late, well, they'll play as long as the sun's shining.
It's not stormy. And then we'll go to the line-by-line. That's in page 21 of your board packet or in your books, 142. And we'll try to answer questions for you. Again, we have the narratives written down for almost every single one of the line items. So if you have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
What was the reason we didn't get the liquor license or the alcohol at the golf course?
If you remember, the insurance was much higher than we anticipated.
So are we going to have that next year?
It's still high. You just have to balance.
I know a lot of golfers would love to drink on the court.
Yeah. Right, and I agree, although I don't golf.
I think that's why some of the, some leagues, I think that's why some leagues may not still have come back to Green Oaks, that's all. Because of, sometimes that factor is why.
Yeah. Could be. I don't, yeah, that's on pause. I don't know. It was just really expensive.
Do you want me to?
Madam Chair, I'll just explain that a little bit more. Our insurance agent, Judy from MML, you know, gave us quotes and everything and kind of compared to other golf courses around the state, Jimmy. And at the end of the day, it usually like becomes either like a wash, like you don't actually receive any more revenue for it, but you still take on that like extra financial burden. Or in some cases, you end up losing out on a bit of revenue because of that. So, I mean, it's just a, you know, got to play it out. And then I think, the last time, I think my cop master was still like collecting some more numbers on other places that were reasonable to our size within population to see, you know, like accurate numbers. Because I think, we're thinking maybe around, I think something that I remember was like 25,000 or so would be like a realistic number of what we could bring in, you know? So is that worth the extra cost and the liability of having people drinking on, you know, township property? So I'm not saying it's not. And y'all know I love a good beer just as much as anyone. But, you know, we have to make good financial decisions too, so...
I also know we were trying to use the senior building, use the senior building for like banquets and stuff. And that was two separate addresses, and we learned that. We thought we could include that as part of... And they said, no, that's a totally separate address, and we'd have to add them. So it was, it's very expensive, and the liability. It's more the, for me, it's more the liability. Like, I don't know enough about it. But when MML said, "The revenue is 25,000", and she had other golf courses, like, "Is that worth..."
You're talking about from the alcohol, so?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was talking about, you had mentioned leagues.
Yeah.
And leagues could...
Well, no, they have leagues at the other golf courses too.
They have alcohol sometimes, too.
Yeah, the people with alcohol and leagues, she gave us a number of 25,000 in revenue. So it increased it only that much, but the liability went up too. So you just got to figure out. I really thought we could use the senior building. I didn't know that they had to have a whole nother address, but it does. We can still look at it. But we can't even get an assistant hired. You know, you have to have people train. This is serious, when you're serving alcohol, it's a high training and...
Yeah, the tips training, is that what... Yeah, the tips training, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Kirk, and then I think one other thing that we discussed that I am remembering just in this conversation is the cooler, like the locked cooler and the supply shortage for getting that. Is that right, Kirk? Tips?
Yeah, I took it. It was four hours. There's nothing to it. It's pretty simple, to be honest with you. So it's a four-hour class. Whoever's behind the counter would have to take it, but it wasn't anything difficult by any means, in my opinion. But it definitely prepares you though to, to be aware of what's going on. So I can, I can definitely say that it would, it's definitely worthwhile to take. But it wasn't anything that I don't think anybody would have a problem passing, to be honest with you. Just have to pay attention to it, make sure you know what you're doing and make sure you're following what you're doing. So.
I think it gave us a better rate or it was required. I can't remember which it was, but...
All right. There's, there's some other factors that played in there with the ID scanner and things like that. It was a 5% discount. And when we compared them to other places, though, their insurance policies aren't the same as ours. It's completely different, which is why they can do what they do. Most of them are self-insured, which they're able to go with the annual premium. And then after that, though, all of their regular insurance kicks in. Should there be something above and beyond that? It doesn't work that way with MML. So that's one of the major differences.
Yeah, we really did look at it, Jimmy. I mean, seriously, maybe something will change if it does. We can look at it. But we got to get up and running and we can't even hire seasonal. The bars and the restaurants can't hire people. I mean, I don't, it, it's a challenge to get people to work right now. Not because they don't want to, because you have to pay more money and it's competitive right now. People can get better jobs, which is good. But for us, we can't, we can't get seasons to work, you know, like outside maintenance here. So I think hopefully that'll all change and, you know, people get more comfortable going out and vaccinated and masked up or whatever they have to do. But it's going to turn around. I'm like Heather, I'm not opposed to it, but I want to make sure that it's a good financial decision because it's not our personal money, of course. It's taxpayers' money and one lawsuit will, unless you had high liability, which is what we wanted to have.
Yeah. And just like if Judy tells you like, I don't know about this, guys, like that's the, that's really the thing that I was like, oh, okay, let's just learn a little bit more about it. But anyways, sorry to go on a rant about this. It was a long discussion.
Is there any other questions on the golf course fund? Revenues, expenditures? Anybody, any questions?
Great job, Kirk.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kirk.
Keep it up.
Thank you. All right. So that is the end of our presentations for all of our funds budgeted. The next thing you'll see is actually a final draft. We'll send that to you. Also with some of the changes that we've made in between, I did make a note on, one of them, I didn't put that because I didn't change the dollar amount, but we did make a note on the economic development director's position that we were not going to fill just yet. So we did put a nice note in there of why we weren't going to do that. Also, the biggest change is going to be the healthcare. I had it budgeted at 20%. It came in at negative 4.96. So that's the biggest decrease you'll see. And that did change some of the appropriate prior year fund balance numbers, you know, because you have to budget and you have to make them equal. So I will send a list of the big major changes that we made when I send the final draft to you. Thank you very much.
And also with the court and all the funds, you had to put in OPEB and pension where they didn't have that cost before. It was in a different fund. And so there's been a lot of changes at the state level that we had to change. So everyone's going to have the same accounting number, which is really good across the state, that you can look up other communities as well and be, but for us, it was a major change.
For everyone, it was a major change.
Yes.
And it's still going on. We were just ahead of the game. I had to have it done before the end of this year. So I've got that done. And actually, I think I had till next year to get it done.
Right.
But I wanted to go ahead and get it out of the way.
And I just want to thank John Heinz for all his help on it and Jobana and all the department heads and everything that they do to make it work. So we'll be teed up for next year with the new BSNA. It's going to be much easier to insert all the numbers in. The narratives are there as well. So it'll be good. Thank you so much, JoJo. Okay, next on the work session is a zoning ordinance. We have Megan and Jason are here.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. How are you? Jason Icoangeli, Township's Planning Director. So this is the second time we've met, continuing workshop for the draft zoning ordinance. The last time me and Megan were here, we left off on the zoning map. We had gotten through all the different zoning map changes, consolidations of districts, had a pretty good discussion, I think, on our corridor improvements and the form-based codes. So I was going to circle around to start this evening and see if there were any more questions on the zoning map before we moved into Article One, which is sort of the legal functions of a zoning ordinance. No?
Jason, would you mind just explaining how you're going to notify all the property owners?
Sure. So this process to date has been a couple of, and Mrs. Peterson's on the Planning Commission as the liaison. There's been two workshops with the Planning Commission where there's been no formal action, just presentations, the same PowerPoints, and same discussions, getting questions, eliciting questions, finding changes, those types of things. I mean, we know there's still some grammatical things that exist. We're catching still some cross-referencing, which as you can imagine, in a document this size is pretty elaborate. So we've had two meetings at the Planning Commission thus far. We're anticipating, we have anticipated two meetings at the board, but it seems like we'll probably likely need more time with you folks. The next sort of formal step in this process will be a public hearing that we just sent the notice to the paper today for November 23rd at the Planning Commission for a public hearing on the draft zoning ordinance. So we've also worked today to get the zoning ordinance added to the township's website, along with a copy of the zoning map, which the, the public hearing notice points people to the township zoning ordinance, also lets them know that the draft ordinance will be available at our counter and the clerk's counter here at the Civic Center during normal business hours. The next step in all of that, and we're working on it now, is to get letters out to all of the parcels in the township that would be receiving a change in zoning based on this zoning ordinance rewrite. So there is no formal requirement in the State Zoning Enabling Act that we send notices to people. We exceed the threshold. So the threshold in the State Zoning Enabling Act is 11 contiguous parcels or more being rezoned. Do not require that you have to send out formal targeted notices to every parcel with the 300-foot notice, which would be customary for a rezoning. So the state act takes into effect that, okay, this is an elaborate wholesale rezoning process. And so you don't need to specifically send targeted notices. Now, I've talked to other planners around the state, including Carlisle Wartman, Ben and Megan. So I've been soliciting opinions. There's two sort of methods that communities take with this regard. There's one where they just hold the public hearing and have the notice in the paper. And then other communities that have the public hearing with the notice in the paper and they send letters out, although they're not required. So we're doing the second of that. We'll be sending letters out to folks in the community, making them aware of the zoning change that they're going to have, and then letting them know that we're going to have office hours available to discuss their, their change if they have any questions. And so that'll be here at Township Hall. We're working on scheduling the dates and times right now so that we can have Carlisle Wartman available along with myself to answer those questions. So those letters should be, we're drafting the letter now. The letter should go out in the mail no later than Monday next week, which is the 8th. Again, there's no statutory requirement for those letters and therefore there's no hard and fast date that they need to be out. So a typical notice has to be out 15 days ahead of a meeting. These, these letters aren't tied to that, that time requirement. Now, the newspaper publication is, and that went to the newspaper today, will be published on Thursday. So it'll actually be well in advance of the 15 days prior to that hearing. But these letters aren't required, but we think it's, it's a better method of practice to get out in front of our residents and our business community that may have a zoning change and get these letters to them and then meet with them ahead of that public meeting. And then this matter being taken up at the board after that. And some of the other things that we have to do, we're also getting letters together. There's a provision in the Zoning Enabling Act that requires us to send letters to all of the registered utilities with the clerk's office. So railroad companies, pipelines, gas transmission, electric companies, any of those that would be registered and want to receive public hearings, notices, we'll get a letter notifying them. Basically, the same public hearing notice that we sent to the paper is what they'll get in an envelope, pointing them to the draft ordinance. The fact that there'll be a public hearing and if they want to view the ordinance for themselves, along with the map, they can go to our website. Those letters will be going out. And then the only other thing that me and Megan discussed this evening briefly is after we have the public hearing, there's an old requirement that the local county planning commission be sent a copy of the zoning ordinance. But we don't have a county planning commission anymore. So we'll forward a copy and invite any comments they might have to the planning, Washtenaw County, I think they call it the Economic Development, Office of Economic and Community Development. So we'll make sure that they get a letter as well. Now, they don't have any statutory authority. They can't step in and tell us we have to change anything, but they can provide us with any comments that they may have in a 30-day window. So we'll make sure that we get that, that done as well. So that, we'll forward it to their office. The statute requires that that be done after the public hearing be held. So after we hold that public hearing on the 23rd, we'll begin the clock ticking on the county having a chance to take a look at it for a 30-day window. And so after that window is passed, then we'll look to schedule, the next formal meetings will be before the Township Board for a first and second reading prior to publishing, if, if the board so chooses to adopt the new zoning ordinance. So those are sort of the next steps. I know that was a lot. I'm happy if you have questions about it too. And if you have anything to add, Megan, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have after this meeting, because I know there's a lot of Michigan State and zoning enabling legislation, you know, priorities or check boxes that you have to check to make sure that you do all this in a consistent manner. And we're making sure that we, we doubly check those boxes as we go through this process, as we don't want to do anything that would hamstring getting this, this zoning ordinance passed. So again, the next major hurdle or milestone that would be reached will be just a public hearing before the Planning Commission on November 23rd. But in the meantime, we want to continue to meet with you folks as often as possible to, to go through all of these articles with you and answer any questions that you might have. So without further ado, if you folks don't have any questions on sort of the process, we can get started on Article One, which Article One may be the most legal, heavy article in the entire ordinance, pretty well vetted by McLean and Winters. You know, this, this basically just sets the stage as to who has the authority to have a zoning ordinance, who makes the decisions, and where does Ypsilanti Township derive its power for zoning, which is from the State Zoning Enabling Act. Megan, do you have anything you want to add on Article One as far as what the content might be?
No, Article One is pretty cut and dried and actually pretty short. So, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
If not, we'll move on to Article Two, which is a little bit more interesting. It's the definition section. The definition section remains, what we did was, what we think is nice, is we took all the definitions that were found in the ordinance, other than the ones in the adult entertainment district section of the ordinance, and moved all of the definitions to this article. Because there were definitions scattered throughout the entire document. We felt they should all be in the definition section, not in their individual articles, except for the ones, again, with regard to sexually oriented businesses, only because that list is exhaustive and there's a bunch of stuff in there like massage parlors and all that other kind of stuff. So those are the only definitions that you will find in the ordinance outside of the actual Article Two definition section. And if there's any of these definitions that you might have questions on, so anything obviously that was redlined or underlined is an addition. Anything that was struck through is a removal. We didn't remove a whole lot. We got rid of some stuff that's antiquated, like arcades, because we really don't do a lot of coin-operated arcades anymore. And then we added stuff, you know, like active solar energy structure and, and, and different definitions like that. So if you folks have any questions on definitions, or Megan, you have anything else to add?
I just wanted to add two things that came up during the Planning Commission work sessions was, one, a request that an arcade might come up and then to include that word in a definition of indoor recreation. And so we'll do that. And then also, there was a request to either highlight or hyperlink all of the definitions when they were used later in the document to help readers to know to go back to that. We went through that. I told the Planning Commission that that was not in our original scope of work. It's a lot of formatting. It can be done. I don't know whether us as consultants are the right choice to do it. Once that's done, that's a formatting thing. It wouldn't necessarily stop the adoption of the ordinance because you're either formatting or having somebody hyperlink. And it might be a best job if you had an intern for summer or something like that where you had somebody who had time, who can invest the clerical time to do that. It would improve it, but it's not a necessity. We wanted to share that, that Planning Commission, Planning Commissioners brought those issues up.
Yeah. And sometimes, you know, too much of a good thing cannot be such a great thing. I would even, I'd almost want to see about hyperlinking every definition back because some of them may get to where there'd be five, six, seven, or eight hyperlinks on a single page. So I don't, I don't know. You know, typically, if there's a word that you find in the zoning ordinance that you don't understand, you would look to go to a glossary section and, and try to see if that dish definition is available. Zoning ordinances are kind of strange, whereas the glossaries in the front and not the back. But we do try to do a pretty good job of referencing as many words as we possibly can. Another comment that was brought up is when you read technical text, sometimes a word that's defined as italicized, that's more of a, like a real succinct legal thing. And I don't know that that really has a place too in a zoning ordinance, because that wouldn't make for a whole bunch of italicized words as well. So.
So the arcade is gonna be in there somehow, because I think what's old is new. And there are like people who like that old style stuff. And then it, like, kind of like folding, we couldn't anticipate that someone would come up with a game that would be played inside. That's not what we're thinking about. So does it go in a similar situation like that where it would be indoor?
Yeah. So I think we're going to include arcades as a indoor recreation use and not its own standalone use anymore. So it, it will still have a place. It just isn't, we don't see too many arcades anymore as standalone. They're sort of like, the example was brought up, like Revel and Roll, the bowling alley that has an arcade or a Dave and Buster's type scenario where it's, it's a little bit more elaborate than what the old definition of arcade was, which is more of your, you know, slot machines in a business that's open from, you know, you know, for people to come and go as they please, but there isn't any other services offered there other than just coin-operated machines.
So it's a use, not a zoning. Before, it was a standalone zoning.
Yeah, there was a standalone definition for an arcade, but now it kind of gets indoor recreation uses.
Right, okay, I got it.
Any questions on definitions or?
Jason, I remember...
Jason, I remember we've kind of gone over my questions for all these ones, but would you just like briefly talk about the difference between the cemetery and the crematorium thing and that little nuance? The crematory and the cemetery and how there's like the difference?
So there is a pretty old state law that requires, under the state law, crematorium is considered a cemetery. And so let me get to that actual definition here. So we, we, we made sure that we differentiated between the two because before there was the issues that we had over the summer regarding the crematorium on Michigan Avenue, there was no reference in the zoning ordinance to a crematorium, other than the fact that there was a definition for cemetery and the state law crematorium is regulated as a cemetery. It has to have a license, just like a cemetery would. And there's, I learned a whole lot more about cemetery uses over the summer than I really wanted to. But one of the things in that is that a person who owns a crematorium cannot own a funeral parlor. They, they have to be under separate entities. So, and I'm not sure why, but there's a lot of state regulation that, that deals with all of those uses. And so we added a definition to this section for crematorium and enclosed facility wherein human remains are cremated. So, so that we had a, a definition to fall back on, whereas we didn't have one prior to this. So.
We have an animal crematory. Or do they use the same?
I believe it's all the same. I, I take that back. I think there's separate licensing, I think through the state for, for both. And I don't know if they can have the license at the same facility or not. That would have to be something I'd have to find out.
Thanks, Jason. I know it's not a great topic, but I thought it was important.
No, it's relevant. So. Is there any other questions on any of the definitions that might have been added? Or subtracted? If not, we can move on to Article Three. Article Three is the administration. It lays out who does what. The duties of the zoning administrator are detailed in their sections on the use of consultants. Development agreements have been added. And then the section on performance guarantees has been updated to reflect what our current practices are. And then additional details have been added to the section on public notices. One of the key items that we tried to do throughout this entire document, not just this section, was to use standard language that's used across a lot of municipalities in the state of Michigan, one of which is the term zoning administrator. In here before it referenced different people for different things. I believe it used to reference the building official was the one who made zoning decisions, which that's not how it works today. There are many zoning administrators and this document gives the township supervisor the ability to designate who zoning administrators are for our community. I'm considered a zoning administrator, making zoning decisions, but so are our code enforcement people who are in the field. They're also zoning administrators because they make decisions on zoning matters. So there's not just one zoning administrator in the township. However, there is a formal designation for a zoning administrator. Most municipalities have someone who's recognized as such, although there are a number of people that do, are sort of quote unquote deputized to do that, that job. But there's usually one sign off for a zoning administrator. I, I think currently in my capacity, I, I do those, those sign offs. Typically they're for state licensing issues, like folks who need a license for new and used automobiles. The state requires that you get a signature from the township zoning administrator. So currently I, I sign those types of things when they, they come to our, our office. There are other licenses as well that require that, but that's just one example. And so not only just zoning administrator, but there are also a bunch of references to the economic development director. And we went in there and made up some conscious decisions to change them to be more, more in line with what municipalities across the state give those titles. And then also to make it reflect more representatively of who in our community is making those decisions. So where the building official makes decisions, it's, you know, we've, we've changed the document to make sure that those are decisions that Dave Bellers does make. And so we've changed the, the language to reflect that.
So that makes sense to me. And then I'm also thinking like future, you know, when people are using it, that may not be the people who have the seats at the table. Like how do we make sure that the intentions, like you're talking about the way the township works now?
That's a good question.
There's understanding that this is the way it's meant, whether it's flow charts or something, so that there's a shared understanding of how you're thinking about it, maybe how the township operates now versus, you know, all the people who are at the table are not the people who are at the table. And then there's, it's left to other interpretations. How do we make sure that happens?
It's a good question. So we sort of did that when we rewrote this to use these terms that are broad and don't, the, the ordinance used to use very specific job titles. It would reference the economic development director. It would reference the planning director. It would reference the building official. And we've gone back and replaced those to reflect sort of these terms that other local units of government use like zoning administrator. Now, your zoning administrator may be myself as the planning director or down the road, it may be Belinda Kingsley, who's your code enforcement or code compliance director. So although the titles of the staff may change, that zoning administrator term is sort of the broad umbrella definition that is used and recognized statewide for person, persons who make zoning decisions. And we've made a pretty conscious effort to make sure that anytime a title is used in the zoning ordinance, it reflects what our hierarchy is and what should be in a zoning ordinance. So we, we made a really, you know, we made sure that we, we didn't pigeonhole it into just specific people, that it's, it's painted with a broad enough brush that as people move in and out of positions, they'll still be able to fulfill these duties. Sure, please.
Yeah. I think as Jason indicated, there were about five different titles floating around in your zone, in the current zoning ordinance. And one of the things was to streamline them all into one, one title of zoning administrator, or if it was better for it to be the building official or some, or the township attorney, then to specifically put those duties to that role. And in every case, when it's not something that would be very generic, like the township attorney or defined in state law, like the building official. So the zoning administrator, you'll see at section 301, there's the duties of that zoning administrator. So those are there for in the future for your human resources director, township board, planning commission, then when you're creating or filling positions to know those are, those are, that's your job description. And that office or department may change its names, name, but that zoning administrator still is there and the township board has the power to designate who that person is. And that's how we work with many different communities and a zoning administrator is something that's universally known. So sometimes we as consultants play that role. Sometimes you have somebody who's there. So I think the words in himself in terms of the duties, that's the continuity.
That's a good point. Any other questions on administration? Move along to Article Four is district regulations. So these are establishing the zoning, the districts that are on the map and lays out the bulk setback and use regulations. This consolidates the intent and supplemental standards from the standalone articles. So one of the big takeaways as far as this district regulation section goes is it used to be before bulk standards, setbacks and use regulations were all found in different parts of the ordinance. So if I was going to build a house, I first have to go to sort of the use standards, find single family residential, find out the fact that a single family home is okay in the neighborhood I live. Then I'd have to go to a completely different article to find what the setback standards and the height standards were in order for me to figure out where to put the house on the lot. That was in a completely different place than finding out, you know, where the, the use table was. The way that we are organizing the zoning ordinance now, every single use will have sort of its own couple pages where you'll find the uses, the setbacks, the height restrictions, and then any of the other parts of the ordinance that might be applicable, like landscaping, lighting, though it'll reference where those sections of the ordinance are that pertain to that. So when someone comes in, like a resident who wants to build, say, a new house, when they find their zoning district, say be it R3, everything is included in that R3. What's allowed? What are the height restrictions, the setbacks for houses? Same with the new business. If it's general business, it'll have all of the different requirements, height, bulk requirements there. And then it'll also have a list of all of the other applicable parts of the ordinance with regard to where do I go to find out, lighting, landscaping, all these other types of things. It completely reorganizes the ordinance to make it to where it's, it's user friendly and not spread out in a bunch of individual articles, which was customary. So it's not like I'm knocking the old ordinance. It, that's how everybody's ordinance used to be organized. Now it's, it's not. It's, it's laid out more in this fashion. Megan, you wanna?
Well, the other thing we wanted to highlight was that, and we talked a little bit about this the last time, is it makes a traditional subdivision a special use. So that it has to have a public hearing and there's discretionary standards. Any subdivision would come before township board. And that's how the zoning ordinance operates now. And that's how it's going to operate in the future. But just, and then that, an open space development option, which was based on what you currently have is in your PUD for residential option. That was seen as the ideal when we talked to the planning commission and township board members. And the decision was to make, make, let's make that the easiest one, not a difficult option. So that would become a principal use. And so while it would be recommended by the planning commission and approved by the township board, it would not have the multiple public hearings that PUD has or the public hearing that a special use has. And so our experience also has been with developers, time is money. And so that this is the shortest process. We are confident that then you would get a lot more of these in a shorter period of time. So, but that's a big change and we wanted to highlight that tonight.
I just, I just wanted to make a comment that this is, I like how you organize this. And this is probably, I'm assuming will help, help your job out a lot as people call and have all these questions. You have to direct them to all those different articles. Now you can direct them to one area. And it also helps you to just be able to recite that one area instead of digging through so many different articles.
Yeah. I mean, in my office right now, I've got like five different things, you know, tacked to the wall that are all the different standards so that I don't have to hurry and flip through, you know, the zoning ordinance as folks call, I can get up and look. But if it's that hard for me to, to, to have to know where everything's at, then you know, it's not fair to, you know, require people to have to spend an inordinate amount of time finding that stuff. And yeah, it'll be helpful for our residents and it'll be helpful for our employees as well.
Jason, this was Article Four we were going over, correct?
Yes.
If you have your computer there, can you just go to page 134 on your computer?
Sure.
Megan, I don't know what it is on the paper one. It says one at the bottom. The only reason I ask, Jason, it's, this is my OCD kicking in.
That's all right.
If it says District Four, it says Article Four, but up at the top it says Article Five. On all those pages, it still says Article Five. So I just.
The, the, yes. Yep. That's, the PC picked up on that one too. So yeah, we have to, I think we already may have already addressed it in one of the other revisions. Yeah, there is a, yeah.
Our, the paper borders and I apologize. That was my mistake. My OCD sometimes is ridiculous.
Yeah. But yeah, just to, not to belabor the point, but I think Megan brought up a good point. We're, you know, putting our best foot forward with making the open space preservation now the, the permitted use and the older sort of straight zoning, no open space being a special use. So now it's the path of least resistance is for you to come in and propose the open space as opposed for us to try to have to kind of guide you down that road. It's, the ordinance is already set up to, to require that. If you want to do one where you don't, then you have to convince us why. So that's a really good step in the right direction.
I think there's no questions unless we can go on to Article Five. But I also wanted to ask the board in terms of a time check. I know that you have your regular meeting at seven and it's 6:25. We do want to get through this as much as possible with you, but as Jason indicated, we can come back. And so just, we don't need to necessarily go article through article. We have it set up that way. If there's particular things you want to talk about, but I know that you have some needs probably before you go into your formal meeting and want to respect that. So.
Yeah. Like how many, we'll go as probably like 6:45 maybe is it?
Okay. And was there, do, does everybody feel it's useful to go to do this article by article as we're going through right now? Or was there any desire to only hit certain things?
It's up to board. I think it's, is it Article Nine or Ten that you guys did the most changes to, Megan? Is it nine? Nine and ten, I feel like.
I think it's ten, yeah. And I feel like Article Five is particularly important with the form based. If people took some time to look at those and had any questions. I know we've talked about those in particular the other day.
I guess since we're right there on, if nobody has any other questions about Article Four district standards, we can move to Five, which is form based codes and kind of touch on that because that is sort of a, a brand new section of the ordinance. That some of us, you know, are, including myself, haven't had a great deal of experience implementing these, but they're, they're vitally important and necessary for the redevelopment that the township is looking for, you know, and allowing sort of like we talked about last time, sort of that infill development in our existing commercial districts to be able to happen and not just allowing for, you know, greenfield development where people are building brand new on green lots. This form based code is really geared to allow people to step in. It's say like a Forbes Dry Kilners type site where it's challenged from the perspective that it's incredibly small and not very deep. This allows someone to come in and propose something that would fit in there and still maybe make it profitable because, you know, at the end of the day, that's what drives new development is someone has to make some sort of a return on the investment. And we think that this, this puts, you know, this really puts us out there to, to take advantage of that and allowing people to come into these sites that are underutilized because based on the current, you know, not necessarily E Course Road, because we have a form based code on E Course Road now, but some of those other areas of town where this doesn't exist, you're up against sort of that traditional suburban development that requires massive front setbacks, parking standards that are, you know, overdone and overparked and, and all those other types of things. And I mean, if we're talking about resiliency planning and storm water issues, you know, we're trying to effectuate change by putting these types of, you know, form based codes in our ordinance to try to take advantage of some of that. But Megan, I don't want to.
So I think the main thing to know is that it scales to the site. So you, there's a, there's a, there's a zoning district and within each zoning district, there's a site type. And so, and on those site types, And so, and on those site types, there's a list of types of buildings that could go there. Smaller the lot, as Jason indicated, the smaller the building. Whereas in the zoning ordinance you have now, the setbacks are the same no matter what the site size, width or height or whatnot. And it completely depends on then people going to the ZBA and getting a variance and whatnot. And so often that's a block, especially a block for someone to redevelop or reinvest into, as Jason said, a troubled site. We found that these help with redevelopment. These help get better quality development and also help to make for more walkable places, which are all things that were articulated in the township's master plan as goals. And so this is an excellent tool to get there. I really encourage people, if they haven't, just to pick a site in a form-based district and apply the zoning ordinance and see what you could build. We, and I think then you really get an idea of how that zoning works and then what could happen, whether it would be a townhouse, a two-story building, a one-story building, and how the sizes and setbacks and the landscaping and the parking are different for each of those building types. But it's really the street and the site size determine what buildings could go there and making sure that they're appropriately scaled and possible. So if there are any questions, we can take them. Otherwise, we can skip on to Articles 9 and 10 where there is a lot, unless somebody had questions about others in between.
All right, now, I see that it allows for two stories. Would it allow for someone to have like a business and then have like an owner occupied?
Yes.
You could have your business and then, since they're in neighborhood areas, it would allow for that?
Yeah. And the other thing that this does is it allows to, for, not only for a mixed-use building in terms of what you're talking, and that's exactly what you're talking about, is retail on the bottom and living on the top, whether it's owner-occupied or live-work unit or whatnot. It also allows for those uses to flow in between parcels. So if you look at your zoning maps now, when you, sometimes there's like this patchwork quilt quality where one parcel is zoned multiple family, the next parcel is zoned general business, general business, general business, neighborhood business, office, OS, you know, multiple family. But they're all within three blocks of each other. And so the zoning map that's proposed takes those areas and said, okay, this is the same, Washtenaw is all the same corridor. Like, and so all the same uses are appropriate. They just might be appropriate in different ways on different sites due to their size. And so instead of someone who wants to go in and maybe do that mixed-use development, but it's on something that's zoned multiple family, they have to then come in, get a rezoning or a PUD, they have to jump through, they have to jump over extra hurdles. And so by having that mixed-use corridor, then you can, you take away a hurdle or two, quite frankly. Did that answer your question, Trustee Swanson?
Yeah.
So I think if everybody's okay and you're okay with it, Jason, maybe we skip to Article 9?
Sure.
So Article 9 is site plan review, and that's the function that 80% of your site plans or your development proposals go through. And there are some, there's a major change here. Right now, your preliminary site plan requires approvals from outside agencies. The Road Commission, the Water Resources Commission, sometimes since you have state trunk lines, Michigan Department of Transportation, all of these take a lot of time, and they take a lot of engineering. What the proposal is, is that a preliminary site plan does not require those proposals from outside agencies. And then a final site plan, instead of going back to the planning commission or the township board, becomes an administrative function, so approved by the zoning administrator, unless that approving body requests final approval. And we work in many communities that do this, and what that does is, number one, the preliminary site plan makes it easier for somebody to bring a site plan in the beginning. And then, then, and then they, if they have an idea or a good idea, they can get a better test of it, and then they can really hear from the township what your concerns are because a lot of times you're the best history of that site. And you can tell them things that may need to go into their engineering that if they've already had to do the outside approvals, they did that engineering. And so then if they get something for you, they have to do that engineering again. It's an extra expense. So, and I, Jason, you want to talk a little bit about how that would make your job easier?
Yeah, so currently, under the preliminary site plan standards, we require all of the agency approvals prior to the site plan going to the planning commission. The way that this sort of helps expedite the preliminary site plan is, we're still going to want to get this plan in front of all those agencies, but it won't necessarily require any approvals be granted prior to going to the planning commission. The approvals from the outside agencies would come at the time of final site plan and detailed engineering. And what this does is it allows someone who's looking at investing in the community to at least get buy-in from the township on the concept and idea and the location of a building on a site prior to having to really spend the bulk of the money on the development in the entitlement process, which is final site plan and detailed engineering. That's where, you know, I would say 75% of the expense for a developer in entitlement lies in final site plan and detailed engineering because not only are they paying an engineer to design their project, they're also paying to have our engineer review it. So it becomes extremely costly at that stage. And this sort of eliminates, gives them the comfort level that they need to make that expense in the later, latter parts of the final site plan and detailed engineering by getting them to the planning commission a little bit sooner and getting that community buy-in before they really outlay the capital to get the rest of the detailed engineering done. Now, I won't say that our process as it is right now is too terribly bad. I mean, it works well for what it's worth, but it does require us to put in additional time in waiting for review comments from outside agencies to grant sort of that upfront approval. And even then, the letters that we're getting, say, from YCUA, Scott Westover is going to recommend, you know, the project at the preliminary stage to the planning commission, but he's really not looking at the detailed engineering drawings just yet. I mean, he'll do the majority of his review at that time when the detailed engineering sets come in because preliminary site plan doesn't require that level of, you know, that level of detail at that time. And so even then, like, road agencies like the planning commission or the Road Commission for Washtenaw County will give you a letter recommending the preliminary plan, but they're not issuing a permit until they actually see the detailed engineering and see the curb cuts and all the end stuff that the folks come up with. So we're waiting on the front end basically for agency approvals that are still going to end up needing to be more thoroughly scrutinized on the back end so we can save potential developers a little bit of time and effort. And again, we're still going to want to vet those plans through those agencies, and they're, I still think that, you know, their, their letters of review are important for the planning commission to see, but we wouldn't require any kind of permits at the time of preliminary, and that's what this does. It just doesn't require that they have to seek agency permits first. You have to have those in hand at the time of final and before any kind of site construction.
So, and that's really the biggest change. There are some updated standards, some new sections on completion guarantees, certificates of appliance recreation abandonment, development agreements. These are all belts and suspenders to make sure people do what they said they were going to do. And then also, if a proposal needs a variance, it says the process is that it goes to the planning commission, the planning commission considers it. They don't make any decisions, but they give their input. Then the variance goes to the DCA. If they grant that variance, then it goes to preliminary site plan approval. Because there, right now, there was some vagueness in the ordinance about which came next, and that would get problematic. And so in talking with your township attorney and staff, it came up that this was the best process.
Yeah, and I can touch on that just briefly. Basically, we've written this, that the planning commission will consider a site plan and then make a recommendation that the person seek zoning board of appeals approval prior to granting preliminary site plan. And what that does is, is it takes the burden off the zoning board of appeals from feeling like they have to approve the variances because the planning commission already approved the site plan. And then what it also has, does is, if any issues come out of the ZBA meeting, like a change, say the person wants a variance for the height, the building height, and they ask for, let's just say, 25 feet, and the ZBA says, no, we're only interested in you doing 20, it then allows the planning commission to also consider the conditions that the ZBA leveled without having it pitting each one against one another. So it lets the ZBA sort it first, and then the planning commission will approve subject to the conditions that were made by the ZBA. So really, all this does is just, it's a cart before the horse thing. It just codifies that the planning commission will take no action if there's a pending ZBA issue until the ZBA has heard it and then made a decision so that they can see the conditions when it comes back to the planning commission. It gives the ZBA the power to not feel like the PC approval's hanging over their head, and they can do their job, and then the PC gets the conditions and then can, you know, they're going to have to do the conditions anyway because it's a zoning board of appeals decision, but it just, it allows them to work together and not, and, you know...
Trustee Swanson, I saw your big hand.
We answered a little bit, but I'm just trying to, like, when you make such a big change, like, is there, like, training wouldn't be the right word, but how do you make sure that, like, if the system's changing in such a dramatic way, that the people who are, you know, I mean, there probably will be people who are used to the old way of doing it, how do you make sure that, like, we look forward and we make sure that people, this is kind of the role that we play now? And then I'm hearing you say it eventually comes back to the planning commission anyway, right? Because that's that community part.
You have a development review manual that's online, and so obviously, when this, if this zoning ordinance passes as proposed with these different changes in procedures and systems, that procedure manual has got, is going to be updated. And that really is where the, kind of your first line of defense or first line of communication is with anybody who, with the developer or with a resident who's looking to either, you know, put an addition on their house or whatnot. And so all of those would be updated, and then Jason's, I mean, Jason's, your staff would be updated and retrained and know what to do. And then I think, you know, our experience has been, as there's been these system changes, you know, the first site plan review, when it comes through, is, is it going to be a little rocky because there's going to be new things? And then it's just a learning process, and within six months to a year, it smooths out, or you find things like, hey, we really didn't like this, we're going to amend the zoning ordinance, and you can always do that, too. So the one, in the last like three minutes, the big article with the most changes is Article 11, and those are specific use standards.
Can we go back to 9 real quick?
Yeah.
So preliminary site plan right now requires almost detailed engineering, much more detailed engineering than should be required.
Yes.
That's the problem because in order to get drain commission approval or road commission's a little easier, but like, right now, we're waiting on one site plan that was sent to Jason and it's sent out to the reviewing agencies before it goes to the planning commission. And they will, what we've done in the past is approve it contingent upon road commission or contingent, and the planning commission doesn't like that because that's not what our ordinance says, you know, which I agree with 100%. So this kind of fixes that. It allows a preliminary site plan to go to the planning commission and get input, and it notifies if there's a public hearing, the residents in the area are aware, and it provides input to the developer before the engineer gets involved, like, and that's how most communities do it, is what you all said.
Yeah, that's how most communities do it, and it's real money, and developers usually have a limited budget. So they'll budget whatever their construction costs are, and so just for even, let's say it's a million, they estimate that it's 10%, an additional 10% to 20% for their entitlement process or what they might call soft costs. So if I've only got a budget of $200,000 and I go to an engineer and they have to get that level of engineering, that may cost me, for one round, a quarter of my budget. And then if it's wrong, I gotta, you know, so to require that level of engineering in the preliminary...
In the preliminary.
In the preliminary, it makes it a high-risk game for anyone who's looking to put something in the ground here.
Or you can come to a planning commission and say, well, you should do this. And so the planning commission, having seen the preliminary site plan, and we're, they're putting great comments, normally very good comments, that affect the engineering. So they have to go all the way back to do the engineering again, and that's one of the biggest challenges we have is cost for the engineering review and the delay from the road commission or the drain commission. Yucca's pretty good at doing that.
Also, it may get you more bites at the apple to interact with the applicant because that barrier to entry for that preliminary plan is lower than they may come to you at an earlier stage and say, this is our ideas, or they might present to one of my other clients, the City of Dexter, and I wish sometimes the bar was higher for them to get to the planning commission. They go to the planning commission no matter what, but a lot of times, especially when you're looking for quality design, an applicant needs to hear what you want three or four times from three or four people because they really, before they really believe you. And this preliminary, again, especially when you're looking at something residential, and then it would go to the planning commission and the township board, gives the opportunity for there to be more community voice and community input earlier on because, again, that barrier of entry is lower for that preliminary site plan.
Right. So I, I mean, it's recommended, and I understand it. I see both sides of it, but I've heard the developers say like, what do you mean I have to change that, you know? Because they have so much money in the beginning engineering that one change throws off all the other thing, so. And we're gonna, yeah. It's 6:48, so if you don't, like, we'll...
And again, we're at your disposal. Best way is communicate with us through Jason, but he'll give you my number and email. And then throughout this process, if you have any questions, we would be more than happy. And Jason is also great at answering questions, and he knows a lot more about me, about the day-to-day here, and has two new staff who bring experiences from different places and their experiences, too, with these processes and how they, and our, the proposed changes.
Would it be helpful to the board if we tried to be sometime maybe outside of a work session, just at a meeting to go over the remaining parts of the zoning ordinance? And that be the only item, or would you prefer for us to get with Clerk Row and continue to try to use as much time as we can as a part of your work sessions?
Yeah, I mean, I like it at a work session, but...
Okay, well, we'll continue to...
Poor Gloria's heard it before at the other.
Yes.
It was the same when I was on the planning, yeah, so, okay.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
6:49?